Time is 7:08 and I think we officially call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Nelson, Lanier.
Here.
Blackman, Cora.
Here.
Leestra, Eric, Cora.
Here.
And the board is present. First item on the agenda. Open the floor, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, as the board like to open the floor to a public hearing and take any questions regarding the letting from the public. The board will then close the public hearing and the board may adopt the 2019 letting during the action portion of the agenda.
So enter ten motion to go to the public.
Thank you. I'd like, I need a motion please to go into the public hearing.
So.
Roll call please.
Craig?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Leestra?
Yes.
Lanier? Blackman? Cora?
Yes. The motion is passed. At this time, we can up some of this. Look at this Fran. Roll call, I know you're all tired of talking about this already. On, so, just to recap, you're going to quit on tax levy, 1.9% CPI. Then you will approve, um, the application for the property tax relief grant. And then you're also going to approve the resolution to increase the loss factor for the bond and just from five percent to six percent. And I just take any questions in the public. Um, closed hearing, move on and then I'll sign that out. Thank you. Any questions for the? Any questions from the audience? Any questions for the board members? Okay. You need a motion to close the public hearing. So move. In a second, second. Roll call please.
Cora?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Blackman? Yes. Lanier? Leestra? Yes. Cora?
Yes, and the motion is passed. We're going to move to item number five on the agenda with your audience conference. We have one community member who's assigned us. It's Valencia Dansler. Dansler? Okay, so. How do you pronounce that?
Dansler.
Dansler.
My name is Valencia Dansler. Most people know me by my stage name. Madden Dansler, Hattie. And also the community outreach is, um, Kids' Corner. It's a nonprofit organization that, um, provides resources for underprivileged children and abused children. And the reason that I'm here today is to inform the community, as was before, about a urgent town hall meeting that they're having in Flossmore on Saturday to address the sexual predator that is living in our community. He has received bail. We're not sure if he's back in Flossmore, but, um, this meeting will provide options and solutions on how residents can be proactive in taking the necessary steps and preventive measures in acting new laws and survival healing process with the launch of the Flossmore Survival and Sexual Assault Support Program for children and adults. So the meeting is going to be Saturday, December 14th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Flossmore Community House, which is at 8:47 Hudson Road near Western in Flossmore Road and IV1. Have them email me the information. We have to, uh, take this seriously. Um, our community is at risk because we're a vulnerable community. Predators will prey on our community because it's easier access. And it is very heart wrenching that this man has, uh, assaulted two children, has a restraining order against him, and some judge gave him bail so he couldn't be running around here. And, um, we want to protect our community. I'm here because I want to protect the community and the children. So thank you for the time and allowing me to make this comment.
Thank you very much. Can you tell who's sponsoring the town hall?
Kids' Corner.
Thank you.
And, um, the Flossmore Community Church has donated the space and Flossmore's room restaurant is donated by.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the board's ed would like to recognize the December 2019 Above and Beyond winners.
Sure. So one of the things we talk about all the time, certainly privately, but also publicly, is, uh, the amazing staff that we have in our district. The people who give so much of their time, their effort, their souls, their hearts to our kids, which are our most important resource. As we've talked, we, I feel like we're always talking about different ways to recognize our staff members. And so Eric has done a lot of work developing the Above and Beyond kind of process. And he'll talk a little more about it. I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but I can tell you, as we've went through the nominations, um, a lot of heartfelt comments, a lot of, I mean, we had students who participated in this process, lots of parents, lots of staff members recognizing their fears. And one of the things that we want to do is bring these winners to the board and publicly acknowledge them and share that information with the rest of our district, 161 community. We have our cool new banner that's up there. Yes, it's really awesome. It's going to go on the wall, um, after we recognize people and you'll see that grow with the coming months. So just want to thank Eric for all of these guys' projects and all of them.
So, uh, just a little bit of background about our Above and Beyond program. Every staff member, certified, certified, social, or instructors, anybody can be recognized. Uh, we received 49 nominations, uh, for recognition so far. And we've, uh, selected five candidates so far to, uh, that have early outlined our, um, criteria, which are, they participate above and beyond defined boundaries of his or her duties and responsibilities, uh, take initiative to develop or implement a creative solution to benefit the students, school, or community that are positive, punctual, and professional, demonstrate effective communication and outreach across all settings, and inspires others to make District 161 a better place. So, without further ado, our first nomination, when I call your name, if you would just come up, is Danielle Montijo, first grade teacher from Wester Avenue. So Danielle's nomination, uh, Mrs. Montijo works hard every day for our scholars by creating an environment where students are encouraged to work hard, but also have fun in the process. Her classroom is well managed and has multiple avenues for students and parents to be recognized or receive information, including Secret Star Students, Fun Friday, weekly raffles, glow and grow progress reports, and weekly parent newsletters. Mrs. Montijo extended learning opportunities to the parents in her classroom as well. She has created YouTube videos for parents to understand how reading levels are determined. Mrs. Montijo realizes that parents are an important part of the learning process for her students and spends extra time ensuring that parents understand what is going on in the classroom. Mrs. Montijo is nominated by Karen Chung and Katie Sicklin. Congratulations Danielle. Our next nominee unfortunately couldn't be here with us. It's coming down with that piece of, of the Germans, uh, but that was Mr. Mark Eichlott, instructional coach at Parker Junior High. Uh, Mr. Eichlott has developed such a wonderful cross-country experience for our Parker students. His dedication and passion have led to create a positive environment for all students. Mr. Eichlott leads students to do their best and be their best, not just on the course of cross-country, but building character and life skills. He commits so much of his own personal time to create strategies for training and focuses on the whole child by discussing grades, nutrition, how students encourage their teammates, goal setting, respect, and humility. He makes sure that the athletes are all gaining a sense of accomplishment, no matter what level they are running. These characteristics are not exclusive to the cross-country students. Mr. Eichlott stops students with a friendly hello and checks in with them, which this has had a positive impact on the culture and student engagement at Parker. His recognition comes from three different nominations that all attest to his caring nature and his willingness to do everything he can to ensure students are successful. Mr. Eichlott was nominated by Kimberly Zedner and two other parents. Our next nomination was for Ms. Carol Creed, third grade teacher at Flossmore Hills. Ms. Creed has been a game changer for students and families. She has made an impact upon students to change study habits and to be responsible and respectful. Over the summer, Ms. Creed reached out to parents to ensure that families knew her expectations for the incoming third grade students, as well as what families and students could expect from her. This communication has welcomed families into their child's education positively and warmly. Ms. Creed was nominated by Asia Winding and one other parent. Congratulations. Our fourth nomination is for Mrs. Kathy Canawa, our district certified nurse. Mrs. Canawa has been a part of my son's 504 team from the very beginning of his academic journey in District 161. She has been a constant advocate for my son and his needs. She's continued to answer questions and provide guidance for me when I was unsure of what to do with his allergies and issues stemming from his ADHD diagnosis. All of the nurses my son encountered in the district have been wonderful, but Ms. Canawa has been a constant friend and advocate. Mrs. Canawa is nominated by a parent. And our final nomination for this month is for Mrs. Amy Girk, reading specialist at Parker Junior High. As we implemented the new version of AIMS Web, Amy took it upon herself to create screencasts to share with teachers so they could learn to manage the system. Amy shared these videos with all of the other multi-tiered system of support coaches and teachers within the district. Mrs. Amy is such a great resource to have. Mrs. Girk was nominated by ELL teacher Jennifer Smith. Do you have all the winners just come up? One more question.
I will go on here.
I don't know what I have.
Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda, superpittance report.
Thank you everyone. For coming and being recognized, I certainly appreciate all that you do. Well, welcome everyone. This is our first meeting back since the Thanksgiving break, so I hope you all had a nice chance to enjoy friends and family over those nice few days. It was really hard to believe, and actually Michelle and I were talking about this tonight, but we have two weeks until the winter break and Fran described it as, you know, panic time, right? So we have a very busy couple of weeks scheduled. It's a jam packed, um, but I just want to highlight a few of those items for you. I'm hanging this day, we have our final strategic planning day tomorrow. That is the third full day that we're going to spend working on that plan. We are still on schedule to bring a draft to the board in January for approval in February. Obviously there are tons of concerts going on and, uh, a couple of articulation activities if you want to know about. A meeting with our local educational leaders next Monday, 153 in Homewood, et cetera. And then, uh, meeting with our local municipal leaders on Tuesday. So, uh, making sure that we're aligned where we can. If there are opportunities to create some economies of scale, we'll certainly do that. We're celebrating the holiday here at NV next Monday, so that's always fun. Just had a holiday brunch. We don't have too many opportunities to celebrate, but that's always a fun one, so we look forward to that. If we can't figure out if it's an ugly sweater contest or just a sweater. So, we'll figure that out by next week. I'm sure we'll have some pictures. Thursday and Friday next week, we're welcoming students from Sterling Hills and Western as they're making their caroling rounds and they're going all over, but they're gracious enough to stop here and sing a few songs for us, which is always fantastic. And then Friday will be our last day of school for the 2019 school year. Uh, over the break, the district offices will be open except for the 24th and 25th and 31st of December and then the 1st of January. A little bit different this year, school does resume on Monday, the 6th, instead of Tuesday. In the past, we've come back on Tuesday, but since we got rid of that institute day, now we come back on Monday, uh, which is important because a week later we'll have a board meeting and that's when we get Parker Junior High. It's on the invite, so you'll know, but I'll send reminders. So the board meeting on January 13th is at Parker. We're having a dessert with the 161. Before that, it's going to focus on campus and some digital citizenship work for our parents and students. We'll get to fly around about that, uh, the next day or two. But it's going to be our first meeting of the brand new year with a few action items, but it should be fairly compact. I would say the real start tonight would be the, the dessert with the 161, where we're reaching out to our parents and our students, talking about campus, helping other people get logged in. We have several hundred parents who've downloaded the app and who are our candidate, so we want to give more. Um, so that'll be a main focus, but also getting the digital citizenship, social media aspects and things of that nature for students. So, uh, this is a, this is our last meeting of this school year. Certainly want to wish everyone a joyous holiday season and happy new year. So that's it on my report.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. We have a number of consent agenda items. Can I, can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the December 9th, 2019 personnel report, payroll for the month of November, minutes of the special board ed meeting October 28th, minutes of closed session October 28th, minutes of closed sessions one and two on November 12th. Pull your request, repeal of policy 2190, the summer 2020 construction bid, the recycling program, and cybersecurity audit. We're going to pull the special audit, special education audit and bring that back next month. We're pulling it so that we can get, um, more information on, um, the budget. Can I have a motion please to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Question.
So move. Thank you. Second.
Question.
Um, on the personnel action, just want to ask, um, are those actions being done in accordance with our policies or? I'm trying to tie it up to make sure. Uh, second, oh, this is a quick question. Second one, um, dimensions, um, of BDA, I may not be saying right, I'm agreeing with what recycling, um, and.
Oh, activity?
Yes.
Yep.
No, because they don't work right. And is that, can you speak to the part of being renegotiated exactly what you're talking about? Cause I wasn't clear on what that statement was. You go there to just follow the report? And I'm just, the cost, I'm just, all that. So I just wasn't clear on what it was.
Oh, no, no, the segment.
Yeah, what, what is that?
So we pay a segment to teachers to sponsor the program, maybe the teachers or students give up their launches. So with the additional steps in fact that we negotiate that.
And then my last question, um, then there's also something about baking, is that something that this unit, like really be, um, we got for?
The volume?
Yeah, no, we're not, I'm like, so for me, my last request, I, I recognize the answer makes sense to me, but then I was like, okay, that was 2017 current, is that something?
Well, I'm assuming that somebody's doing a study, certainly something that we keep track of, we don't have a lot of it, or we have enough of it. So certainly, it's like we're looking at, but it's trying to be more accurate.
Does it count by?
Yes, that's a good question.
There were no more questions.
Chair?
Ozzy.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Um, Blackman?
Yes.
Leestra?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion is passed. The bills for the month of December were reviewed by Mrs. Leestra. Take them away.
May I have a motion to approve bills for the month of December in the amount of $1,328,145.2 and two cents?
Second. Roll call please.
Blackman?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm already on vacation. Yeah, she did. When you're doing payroll and you are making, you are actually.
Oh, I'm making. Oh, I'm making the motion. I made it. Let's go.
Yes. So after that, we just need a second. Thank you.
Blackman?
Yes.
Leestra?
Yeah.
Cora?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Lanier? Cora?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Now the motion to approve the 2019 property tax. So, second. Unison, let it. Any questions? Roll call please.
Lanier? Craig?
Yes.
Leestra?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion to approve the 2019 property tax relief grant? So, second. Any questions? Roll call please.
Leestra?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion please to approve the resolution requesting that the Cook County clerk, the county clerk of Cook County, increase the loss and cost factor to be applied to the bond interest levels of the district? So, second. Any questions? Roll call please.
Craig?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Leestra?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion please to approve policies 220, 270, 2100, 2105, 2110, 2130, 2140, 2150, 2170, 2210, 2220, 2230, and 2260? So, second. Any questions? Roll call please.
Blackman?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Leestra?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes, and the motion is passed. We now will move to several discussion items, starting with the 2019 financial audit report.
Did you think I would want my name to Adam Smogga from Parker and Legacy Professionals? Uh, throughout your comic book, you do your annual audit. Uh, first and foremost, once again, thank you for allowing us to do your audit. Second, on a personal level, uh, thank you for renovating the, uh, that. Oh, really? No, I really appreciate it. 13, 14 years in that back room and when I showed up this year, it was, I'm pretty renovated, it was really nice to factor into the audit, so we don't always have the nicest places in audit, we don't play audit sometimes, you know, it's, uh, it's nice to have that little space to work in, so thank you. Uh, real quick, uh, we'll go over your audit report, uh, spot off the press, we sent Fran on Friday, uh, on civil security crap. It is final as of today, you guys have the rest of the information you need, I'll be able to save it for after, it's tied in your back, so we'll be filed with the state department. But if you want to go ahead and open up on your iPads everywhere, the independent auditors report first, that's just page one. It starts out with reporting financial savings. We have already obtained modified cash basis financial savings. Management is responsible for the preparation and presentation. Our responsibility is to press opinion. Our opinion, which is on page two, is an unloved my opinion, which is the best opinion that out there is the clean opinion. As we've done in the past, we'll just kind of focus on the MVNA. We'll start out in 3C with the district's net position. Uh, we'll start out in the district's net position basically with the balance sheet of the district. We'll start out with the assets. Total assets from the prior year were down, uh, slightly about $400,000. Looking at there, you have your current other assets, 36 million this year compared to 33 million, uh, 30 million last year. You're down about $100,000, that's your cash, uh, cash balance is down 24. However, if you look in the next line, your capital assets were up 20, so that's all the money that was going into those like safety projects and your cash and that, it's moving down a lot here. Looking at your liabilities, liability, liabilities, down about $590,000. You make a one larger bond every year, so that is the long-term liabilities, $915,000. The capital draft, this is the transportation fund that's been fixed, uh, after your end already. And your net position, at the end of the year was 56.19 compared to 55.9, an increase of $207,000 from the prior year. On the next page, 3D, this is the income statement with the change in net position. Total revenue for this was down 1.5 million from the prior year. Uh, I'll hit on some of the, uh, larger ones here, your operating grants contributions down towards $4,000. Stop receiving, once it's one special, our grants can stay at 100. The big, you know, driving towards the revenue down to private taxes. Private taxes were down 1.3 million dollars from the prior year. I looked at it, you know, Fran looked at it, and I asked her, is this really odd? And you have three large refunds in 2016 and 2015 in prior years. Probably the largest, I've seen some, a lot of out here. Uh, state aid, uh, so your grants out in terms of the district's programs, state aid up about $180,000. Investment earnings up $130,000 from the prior year. And then notice your business line is income down about $240,000 from the prior year, you have those, the management, those, three of them. On your expenses, overall, your expense up 1.9 million from the prior year. Really, there are any significant construction support services, uh, what we know is very odd, your payroll then, it's up $600,000 from the prior year. About $420,000 down on complos and their, uh, the base payroll income. And also $200,000 increase in professional development during the year. Really, that's it for the income statement. Any questions on the balance sheet and net sheet for this year? Uh, real quick, we'll go through your footnotes. We'll start here on page 12, notes to financial statements. No change from the prior year, no new footnotes. I will point out on page 19, there's a little bit about your investments, um, not going to steal about groceries under here, but your, your external net simple was at 412 million at the end of June 30. I hope that you guys have $30,000 in that net simple, about 7% compared to our net simple. Any questions on the balance sheet? The only other thing we need to go over real quick is the audit communication letter. Uh, it's not in the, uh, or dots, uh, it will be in Fran's hard copy. Our board, we, once again, we, with your audit, which you hired us to do. And it was also our time to say that, um, we had no disreaches to manage it. The district office and our community staff has performed wonderful things, certainly we needed, we always look to point that out. And also our general entries that we proposed and made with the auditor attached to the back, we will post rocks up and some books on, uh, June 30, 2019.
Any questions? Come on.
Just want, certainly appreciate the work that, that Adam and his team do, just really a reflection of Fran and her department is, you know, it's a validation of, you know, the, the tight controls that we have, so Fran, thank you for this. And it's, it's really, just kind of speaks to the work that happens in our business office currently that keeps us transparent, but also a good steward of the community's resources, so thank you.
Thank you. Next item, annual investment report.
Good evening, everybody. It's always a first topic in a lot of areas in the board. So, um, my name's Rob Grossi. I've been the treasurer for the school district for, I'd say 32 years. Uh, graduated Sterling Hills, uh, in high school. And, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll keep the brief, uh, keep it under five minutes, but as Adam had mentioned, uh, we ended the, well, for the, uh, fiscal year in 2019, the pool generated $8,655,000 in returns for the year to the 20 school districts that we serve. Uh, the pool currently has about 280 different investments and we're investing in about 60 different banks in which has, uh... and we're investing in about sixty different banks, which has a bit of a profit. With an average pool size of four hundred thirty-one thousand dollars, the rate of return is a little over two percent. District one sixty-one earned six hundred ninety-six thousand in interest earnings for the year. I have an average front balance of about thirty-three million dollars. And as Adam mentioned, the district comprises about seventy-eight percent of the pool. In turn, page two of the report. This is a comparison of the yield on the pool portion of the portfolio. There's a liquid portion and a liquid portion. For the year, the pool yield, average yield was two... two point four one percent. That compares to the asset fund of two point oh eight percent, one-year treasury yield of two point four eight percent, six-month CD is two point three one percent, and three-year treasury yield of two point five three percent. In turn, page three. The biggest factor that impacts your rate of return is what the Federal Reserve does in terms of interest rates. So basically, I... there's a thing called the Fed funds rate, which kind of determines the rate that banks loan people money. A lot of things are based off of that. So if the federal government wants to get the economy going, they lower interest rates and more people borrow money and spend money. And if they want to slow down the economy, they raise interest rates to try to get people to slow down. So why would they ever want to do that? The Federal Reserve has basically two goals. One goal is to maximize employment, keep the economy going. But the other is to keep inflation under control. So if inflation starts getting really high, they'll tend to raise rates, tend to slow things down, if the economy overheats. So for the first time, probably, that I can recall in all the years I've been doing this, during the projection period, the rates went up and the rates went down. So short-term interest rates, as you can see from the graph, which are almost zero for many years, they've been tripling up for the past several years. And in fact, went up twice. They changed the rate every quarter, they considered changing the rate of the quarter. It went up the first two quarters of the year, and then went down the next two... It went down three times as of this report. So right now, it's at one point seven five percent. It was at two and a half percent less than a year ago. So what happened? Well, President Trump, his policy has been growth, growth, growth in the economy. And with inflation being low, right now inflation's trending at about one point seven percent, he feels that the Federal Reserve should keep lowering rates further, to get things going. And the Fed chairman is a little more guarded, so there's a little back and forth. And I think as far as what the future entails, it's going to be contingent upon how the economy goes. But other countries have been even more aggressive in lowering rates to try to get their economies going. So for example, even though our ten-year treasury rate is at one, at the time of the report was one point seven seven percent, which is very low, the UK was zero point seven three percent for ten years. Japan, if you invested for ten years, it was negative point oh eight percent. And Germany was negative point two eight percent. So we still have an attractive rate relative to the rest of the world, which in theory could mean that foreign investors would put money, more money in our investments, our assets to United States treasuries, which could drive rates lower. So more in commonness than less, that interest rates are going to continue to trend lower, which is good if you're borrowing money. But it has a negative impact, obviously, in our support portfolio. In turn, page five. You can see this, this is what's called the yield curve. And this is the rate of return on US treasuries based on different maturities. And the, this, the line, so the line, the green line is the most current line. And you can see how flat it is. It's called a flat yield curve. So essentially, if you invest it out three months, you get about one and a half percent. And if you invest it out ten years, you get like one point seven seven percent. So it's very flat, there's very little, there are very little value to extending out. Historically, that's not the case. Historically, there's an upward sloping yield curve where, you know, the one, if you invest out one year, you get one percent. If you invest out ten years, you get three or four percent. If you go to your local banks and look at CDs, normally you get a higher rate if you extend out to three or five years. There's very little difference anymore. So in terms of our investment strategy, the question is, currently, there's not a huge incentive to invest out three, five years from now, because you're getting about the same rate as money market accounts. But if rates are going to drop, there's an incentive to lock into those two percent rates or something like that, because money market farms, which are now at about, the ones we're in are about one point eight percent. When that Fed, when that Fed funds rate was down low, it was zero. You know, zero point two percent or something like that, two tenths of one percent. So there was almost nothing. So there is a portion of the portfolio that we're locking into the two percent plus yields in order to make sure that we get some rate of return for a while. Turn page seven. Do you think, is it page seven? Page eight, sorry. You can see this is a breakdown of the portfolio in terms of maturity. First of all, we do not buy and sell... The type of investments we could do are limited by the element of public funds act. So we can invest in stocks and things like that. They're conservative type of investors. So, and then in terms of how we invest out on the yield curve, most of the money that we get in, we needed to pay the teachers, we needed to pay the debt service payments. So a lot of the money is short naturally, because we need the money. But there is some money that can be invested out. So we're getting a portfolio on June thirtieth. Just under fifteen percent of the money was under seven days maturity. Two percent of the money was eight to thirty days. The biggest portion of money was thirty, thirty percent of the money was in one to three-year maturity range. The nice thing about our portfolio now is that we're now the treasurer for both East Aurora and West Aurora, which is in King County. And they're both very big districts that combine at twenty-five thousand students. But their taxes come in in June. They get a big tax payment in June and a big tax payment in August. And the nice thing about that is, is that when they get their tax money into the pool, we can use that money to pay, that's the big expenditure month where school districts can have to pay teacher salaries out. So we don't have to worry about keeping our investments so short that they mature. So we get tax money in March and put down. And normally, I would have to put a big chunk of money in June to cover all the June payrolls for the districts. Now that we get the King County taxes coming in June, we can extend out. With an upward sloping yield curve, like it usually is, that's a bigger benefit. So the benefit isn't currently as valuable. But it's a nice, nice luxury to have. So all those most spots, the eight to thirty-day maturity, that we have very little less convenient taxes are going to come in. Cook County taxes coming in August, and King County coming in September. And that's really kind of the... Turn page ten, I'm trying to look at this slide. This is a breakdown of the portfolio by investment type. If I brought my reading glasses, I can see, I can tell you that the blue, the certificate of deposit is the biggest color. Forty-one percent of the money is in certificates of deposit, and here, about sixty different. There you go. Do you see this whole? Yeah. I literally have two things in my car that have the one side broken. Thank you. Forty-one percent is in deposits, twenty-four percent in bank and corporate notes, ten percent in municipal bonds, eight percent in liquid assets, and seventeen percent in government, the government agencies. It hasn't changed significantly since two thousand eighteen. And generally, thanks so much. In different times, during different times, there's a little bit more value with one versus the other. So that's how, that's generally why the composition of the portfolio changed. But last year didn't change. So with that, any questions? I'm answered.
Great job.
Thanks. I did want to mention, by the way, I hate to give Fran credit for something. But the auditors regularly tell me, because they've heard a lot of the districts, that one sixty-one is always the most prepared school district when they were in our...
I tried to, but you'll do it. Thank you, are there any questions?
So Rob obviously manages investments. He's also very proactive in school finances. Been a really good partner to us, whether it's been on property tax, grant, and all those sorts of things. So just thank you for your partnership, Mr. George.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Rob. Next item, school maintenance project grant.
Yeah, we kind of probarred this one in at the last minute, but represents some free money that we want to take advantage of in January. So we wanted to make sure that we talked about it just briefly tonight. Essentially, it's a one-to-one matching grant, up to fifty thousand dollars. Cover a lot of our summer maintenance projects that we're already doing, that we're going to spend the money anyway, so.
We're going to use the construction, because that's easy.
Okay, yes.
Break that line. So the construction that's going out for did, we're just going to use that project to write the... Architects are already on it, and so that'll be, obviously, it's a five-million-dollar project. Fifty thousand is a drop in the bucket, but it's better than nothing. So we will take every dime that they have, and if any other money comes available, we'll apply for that too, so.
So we're kind of in a whole new pattern on this little construction grants that we hope that will come in the winter, maybe early spring?
Yeah, they're saying they hope by the end of January, we're going to start doing something, but we'll see.
Regardless, we're ready, essentially, they're shovel-ready products, as we've talked about, so that again, it can easily offset the overall cost of the budget.
We like free money. Always, so thank you. Any other questions, comments? Summer Academy planning.
Just wanted to bring this one back, and we'll be in a discussion on this. We wanted to start with just what summer academy has looked like in the past. It's based on some feedback we had before, too, just about our programming, any changes that we'd like to make. So this is absolutely the right time, it's December now, and, you know, that summer is a long time away, but not really, when we think about the park district, we'll be planning. And we'll be posting for summer academy principal, and starting to look at all of those classes. Amber?
Yeah, so just to, the chart on the report just shows some stats of where we're programming that in the eighteen eighteen school year. Some idea of the number of students who participate, that are interested in our virtual programs, and the number of staff that we had. We currently, we started to discuss timeframe for summer school at the last meeting. We currently run our program from eight fifteen until eleven thirty. Students have breakfast before they come, and then they have a fifteen to twenty-minute movement during the day. So in looking at, really wanting to hear from the board of what changes we would like to see, we certainly know that we always want to keep growing and improving the program, but understanding some idea of what we want to see for this school year so that we can start planning in terms of length of the day, staffing, program changes as well, would be really helpful.
So, thank you, first of all. Do you folks have thoughts, ideas? I have several, but please, Jen, right first.
I know we talked about the length of the day, and maybe collaborating with park districts like that. So I know that's definitely one thing that we want to look into.
Yeah, we could definitely reach out to them, check out a little bit of history on that. As we've worked with them as far as transportation of kids from our program to their program, I don't believe it was taken advantage of by many people. But we can absolutely reach out to them again, find out where there are opportunities to run, or either collaborate or run concurrent programs, is a venture.
I know.
Is there a group that they own, or is it?
So it's a, they take a movement break, but it's not like they have gym every day, or they have P E classes every day. It's more of a student strength break, go outside for a little bit, depending on the space and weather, of course. But it's not, physical education is not to be filled in.
Right, I mean, I'm just, again, with your smaller children, I'm in summer school with larger children. And the one thing that always struck me, except for, you know, you're teaching a marathon, you know, from eight until one o'clock, you're really a school mother, is the degree to which kids are really caged in.
Sure.
And, you know, in some, you know, armchair expert fashion, I have, you know, been looking at movement. I know we did a K D training years ago, which brought them in. And I guess, imagining kids who might not succeed throughout the year for various reasons, there might be, and the kids that I know, who, in a certain sense, they tend to be a little bit bigger than the others. And just trying to think in terms of, well, are we giving some consideration to the movement needs of the kids, you know, so that they will be more productive when they are seeing? I don't have, it's not a rhetorical question, just curious.
Yeah, no, it's absolutely necessary. I think it goes back to the question of time. So as we're planning, and we know to try and build in time for that, so that's going to potentially extend the amount of time that people are running, so it's all going to be there.
I was just, I wondered, I can't remember the highlights or any parents. I do have off the top of your head, and does anybody remember what that, the highlights or what parent said?
Off the top of my head, there are always things around the time. We make it the whole day, we always get those comments. Can we see more movement? Students have more time to do art and other activities. Steam activities was a big suggestion in last year's survey. Then also, just on the front end, parents wanting more information in more, in multiple formats for the information leading up to the start. So we do the registration night, and we do the forums on the website. Parents gave us feedback questions, they wanted to see more of. Can we do a parent meeting once we're registered, but before the kids start, to get an idea of what the day will look like, and who the teacher is? And because it's not the same as their regular school year teacher. So those are some of the things, again. All of those things in terms of adding steam, activity, and, you know, more movement opportunities, again, would go back to extending the length of the day. Or something else gets cut down. So right now, we cover ELA and math during summer school. It's sort of, would one thing need to be replaced for something else, or it will be extended?
What kind of an extension might that would like? Would it be like an extra half hour or an hour related to it?
It really just depends. I think the main thing that we need to, two main things that we need to keep in mind is, our buildings and grounds teams, they have work that they need to do in the buildings over the summer also. And then also, our teachers. So we had, I believe, thirty-eight, or thirty-three teachers and staff members from District one sixty-one teaching summer school last year. Those teachers really do, into the school year, have a few days' break, go straight into summer school. And so that half day allows them to do other things with their day, and just sort of, you know, be able to not be in school the full, the full day. So we just have to be mindful of their time and what people are willing to commit to. So if we have a longer day, we have to be prepared for the possibility that we may not have people, as many people, willing to work a longer day in the summer. They have other commitments or other things that they're doing. But certainly not... But certainly not a barrier, but just something to consider.
Would we ever consider like a drop share? So a teacher in the morning and a different teacher in the afternoon?
That's actually something we do consider, yeah. Would help to ease the load on you.
I do want to add, or just throw it out. The purpose of the discussion is not for you to be able to answer every question.
No, no.
Yeah, it's really to get ideas. Yeah, I mean, so if you can, if we can leave this discussion with, you've got sort of a menu of ideas, but also allow room for you all to also include your own ideas? And then we can have a fun conversation. Because in January, I mean, so this is just sort of our, what is, is this possible? I mean, because we could go through this whole exercise and decide that it's just not economical. But I just don't want you to feel like you need to be prepared to answer a question.
Yeah. What the board would like to see, because like you said, then we can go back and start building. And also addressing their needs. So summer school is also about addressing academic needs. And so once we have data from the spring, we'll have a better sense of how many students are we talking about mandating for summer school or strongly encouraging them to come to summer school. That will give us a more complete picture of what, what students will be serving.
Yeah, and that's a perfect place for you to have a jump in. For those students that are mandated to attend, do we have a percentage of how many of those students are attending?
They attend, yeah. We pretty much get those students to attend.
So we do get those? And from a measure standpoint, do we know that the following year or years, that there's been growth on those students?
That's something that we would have to take a look at when we get their spring scores for this year.
Okay, because I guess for me, what I'm trying to find out is how much are we getting? Because we're investing curriculum and we're investing time and energy, and I want to see where to put it. Because if the proper level of support being as resulted, we can see that attainment. And how does that look?
So I think, what would be helpful? I think the iteration that you provided is helpful. But if we could look at just, I don't feel like Haley has shown this to us before. I just, what? You just said my name? But historically, because it would be helpful to see trends in terms of whether or not our numbers of students participating has actually been growing over the past several years. I think there are a number of things. Actually, I'll preface what I'm beginning to say with the fact that I actually think if we did have an all-day alternative, that our numbers would actually be higher.
Numbers of students?
Yes, numbers of students. Because I think the short period of time is a deterrent for many who work and need to find other means of childcare. So if there was a way for us to do something more camp-like in the afternoon, that might be extremely attractive, but also would remove the need to have teachers in the afternoon. Necessarily, right? I mean, so could have been a partnership with the park district. If it was a partnership with the park district, could students stay in place versus having to go to Irwin or to any of the other park district facilities? I don't know the answer. I'm just tossing it out there. If not the park district, I feel like over the years, we've had other, like summer STEM programs and other types of programs come into the district for some summer type academies. So if not the park district, is there some other kids who could do, yeah, a half-day activity, whether it's more camp-like or whether it's academic focused? I don't know. I have one other question. I can't remember. So I think, so I think the question is, what would it cost?
I think, like you said, if you're menu setup like menu A, like option A, you have to keep it the same, and it's going to cost us this. Option B is we're going to add a whole day, and this is what it's going to cost. C would be now we're going to do a half-day instruction and then a half-day, right, by camp? Like, yes, next.
So unfortunately, it requires a little bit of homework, but it would just be good for us to have as much information as possible to figure out if it's even feasible for us to do something that's longer.
I think there's going to probably be a couple of things that you're not even thinking included in there. We're probably going to have to run a lunch program, but... And I'm not sure. We have to take a look at what that would look like.
Although, is there a reason why, I'm asking this because I obviously don't know the answer, why we would have to run a lunch program and park district doesn't when they run a full-day program?
They're not school.
I guess we can hear from me. I just want to see some measure academically tied into that. So they're helping our students prepare for next break.
Well, that's, well, so we do measure, we'll provide data back to the program. That's really a point of what we... I guess we would have to, we would have to, because you may get to summer school because you're deficient in your current grade skills, expectations. And so the focus really is on acceleration into that. So I think we'd have to think about how we would measure a change, essentially a change in behavior for the students. And that, maybe we have to think about it.
And I guess that kind of ties another question I have. Because my experience has been entirely, okay, you're going to repeat this part of the school year. We're going to start from, you know, Julius Caesar, and we're going to, you know, miss it the first time, and you're going to eat it the next one. And so it's almost like punishment, like, oh, you know. And I guess to, but the specific academic needs of the students or the standards-based needs that they had never really seem to be addressed. It just seems to be like, okay, redo, you know? And, you know, the second redo, we'll see how we do that, you know?
Yeah, I don't, we don't really approach whether students are mandated to come to summer school. It's strongly suggested they come to summer school, or they're coming because their parents want them to come, or they want to come. Very small, but sorry. But our teachers really don't approach any of those student groups with they, you have to be here, and this is punishment. It's, we're going to have fun learning together, and we know what skills you need to work on, and we're going to have, we really don't approach it as that. There's not a class that's only for the mandated kids in your lecture about why you need to go to summer school. It really doesn't happen that way. So I'm confident that it's not sort of this typical summer class where no one really wants to be there anyway.
But to both of your points, David, I think we do need to reflect on, yeah, there's the content. But what are we hoping that the students take from that summer experience into whichever grade that they're going into? Because ultimately, the hope is to prevent them from coming back. Most of them enjoy them, having to come back into elective experience as opposed to mandatory. So we can think about just what that looks like. How would you make that?
And that is all. Because again, we want to see them succeed. And because growth is the target, that's the result of that, they grow the value.
So I want to push back a little bit on that because there are some students who will benefit from having a recent just because it's a different environment, and it's a space that they need. The pressure is less, there's not the same day-to-day challenges of homework in a regular school year. And so this could be the thing that just sustains and provides an opportunity for sustained growth. On the other side, there's a challenge of just purely looking at scores to determine whether or not a program is successful, because there's so many other factors. So when they need summer school, do they go home and do more work? Do some, not do anything else? Was there a special connection with the teachers? So there are all these other factors. So I caution us with looking at a singular line to determine the effectiveness of it, because it's going to be effective for different reasons. And so if we have a whole set of things that we're looking for, like improving their critical thinking or improving their school readiness, depending on what age they are, then I can say, and we can look for things. And we can see in general, it's helped kids be more successful in these 10 areas versus they were here and they may not have got it worse. I mean, for some, it can be the thing that they just need this always. They need this extra time, whether or not they increase or not.
Is there a sign for work? Or no?
Not, no, not every day. It's teacher by teacher.
I don't know if it would be helpful, but I think we certainly have time to actually ask parents if we had an extended day summer program that they're interested, just to get an idea of, are we even moving in a direction that the community is in agreement? And then the breakfast, how is, how do we currently pay for breakfast? That's in the summer program?
So the breakfast is provided. We do have a special summer school lunch, breakfast program. So we kind of, we apply to the state board and provide that. It's a thriving growth, like it is in the mornings right now. It'll be done basically the same way. We're still trying to figure out what we're doing next year because we're up for scheduled to go off the bid. We may have another option. We're still in the process of looking at what our options are. So probably bringing that to you. January, probably the committee will hold in January, and probably start that conversation.
And are there, are there funds available for lunch?
Probably. I need to take a look at what those requirements are. I would think, based on the population that we're serving and where we have summer school, we probably are eligible. But I have to look into that more.
Okay. So I think that's enough to give you different scenarios to sort of play around with. And I think as you're thinking through each of the scenarios, you know, please include, of course, how much will it cost us? But the difference in cost between if there was, does there need to be a principal in the building all day? Or is there something, does the park district pick over? You know, does, all those different financial scenarios and staffing, I think would be helpful.
We do that. Well, that's up to the 27s.
Did you have any, Rob?
I did. Special education also has a component of summer school. Most of our students factor into the summer academy, our resource level students. But summer school is granted for special education students based on the regression recruitment model. Because really similar to what Caroline was saying, it is, we really want to maintain their skills over the summer. Growth is great, but maintenance is what we need. So that when they come back to school in the fall, they're not eight, nine weeks behind and losing more than, again, a typical student would. So there's a vector of that. And we also do provide related services based on each individual IDP team decision. So those students are involved.
Thank you. There might also be opportunities to even like partner with HF to get student workers home this summer. I do know the high school does hire high school students to run some of their summer programs. Your NHS students will need hours. I mean, so there's all different types of things we can think about partnering with high school.
So one loosely related topic along with summer academy that has a nexus with the high school is graduation. Specifically, graduation for eighth-grade students who have to attend mandatory summer school and want to go to HF. We're going through our policies and trying to find some historical information, but we're one of the only districts that allow those students to walk across the stage who have not met all the requirements for eighth grade. And so we've been able to make a change this year. Not as a penalty, but certainly as a celebration of the students who have, you know, met the requirements. And we're talking about students that we've been talking to since September. Pair of phone calls and letters and direct meetings and things of all that. So probably talking about 10 to 15 children overall. But we'll come back, we'll bring that back to the board with an update.
When you bring that back, the other one of my questions is kind of important for that mandatory thing that you asked, so true for that policy. So right now, our policies say we don't have to hold the back. What does it kind of say? Not only to answer right now, right now, but if we take on a different policy, retain their policy, kind of what does that represent? And what do we see as a potential?
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be to retain, certainly against retention. It just doesn't look good. Frankly, the only change would be those students who participated in our graduation. As a student graduating from District 161 with all the rights and procedures of having met our expectations, it would then be on the high school to determine what that means as a graduate. Or blue or American or whatever.
So in that scenario, would it be possible for students who have, given the 10 to 15 that we spoke to since September?
Yeah.
That they would be precluded from entering into high school?
Well, no more so than there.
You have to take the summer.
Right, it's a mandatory, it's just a mandatory summer experience that they have to have if they're receiving high school. Wouldn't that would change them?
Is there a, I guess, to what degree is there a chance that, yeah, they went through the program and they're still not ready? Or is it just something that they just have to show up?
Again, that's, it's really high school. They could, again, that would, none of those numbers would change. Whatever those numbers were in the past, those would be the same. The only thing that would change is whether or not we recognize those students who have not met our requirements as graduates. That's the only change.
Okay, we're going to come back to this.
But I will be able to speak to the high school kind of response.
That's fine. I just, in terms of thinking about what, you know, graduation needs or, you know, and again, this is not our agenda, so I don't want to make it so, you know, but perhaps if it comes back and we think about, and, you know, I can send emails and questions and talk to the show and, you know, curriculum committee about that as a pervert too. The work we're doing here. But I think it might be a good guiding question, you know, in, you know, even in terms of our strategic plan, our mission and vision to think, you know, when trying to keep us walking across here, we do look at a portrait of a graduate. Is it that you would have gone through the rubber brick and, you know, scored a certain amount? Or is it that, you know, to some degree, you know, you're, you have done what you needed to do here. There's other things you need to do that maybe even like a half-step before the next step. But just, you know, this, I guess, this really just might be a good mission and vision question.
My last point on that is that when we identify those 10 or 15 in eighth grade, I'm wondering, do we know about those 10 or 15 that are the same we had in sixth? That are the same we had in sixth? So that back to, well, what do we need to do to get those 10 or 15? By trying to get to, if we're not having this conversation, they achieve, they're not that same group.
Well, again, that's for a number of reasons.
That we will discuss.
Yeah, no, no.
At the meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so next month is when we'll hear back regarding my son. And the other thing... And the other thing I will add, if, if you all are still inclined to, you know, shoot out a quick sort of a question to parents, you might want to do that between now and then. Because February is sort of the magical month, when many parents start planning for their kids' summer camps and things. Many local camps, that's when they open up, and then that's, they close within like forty-eight hours of them opening, so parents will want to start planning. So if they know that this might be an option, then.
Okay, awesome. It's exciting. We can make it happen. If not, it won't be, because we did not try. Okay, first reading of revised policies, three forty to three fifty and three seventy.
Much shorter than section two. You had adopted a couple of them in September. The only one I've noted is three twenty-two, which is one of those local policies, again, created in 2008. And kind of going through sections two and three, that policy seems redundant, as the content of three twenty-two seems to be covered in two, one thirty, and three thirty. So I would just ask you, or, okay, keep it if you'd like, it doesn't seem like it's necessary, there's no legal references there, so, or that could be one of that's taken out.
Which, which numbers are you quoting?
Which, I'm sorry.
Are you, are you, are you talking, I'm looking at three forty, three fifty, three seventy.
Yeah, those are the ones for first read, I was just talking about when we come, when they come back for a second read, with section three being finished. The only one that I noted in section three that's outside of this charter is that three twenty-two being a local policy. It's not in press, it seemed like it was one of those at the moment, whatever the environment was, they wanted this policy in place, so. But looking at, in updating two, one thirty, and three thirty, three twenty-two seems redundant. Seems like it's addressed already in press policy, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Steve, is there a history? Is Charlotte seeing how three twenty-two, maybe your thought, why that was added?
I can pull it up, just three twenty-two, you said?
Organization, unions, and special relationships.
Thank you, you're doing great. Just give me two seconds. I don't have three twenty-two.
When did, when was that changed?
In 2018.
July fourteenth, 2008 is where it looks to happen.
Essentially, it says that the district is known as a single executive type of school organization with me, or, or the superintendent is as the essentially sole.
Sole.
Sole employee of the board.
Hi.
Were you coming for it?
No, I mean, I think Donna Joy would come on around then, if I'm not mistaken.
This is one of those moments where we establish something, or just so in the future, we make sure it's there, but now we're like, well.
So officially, just.
You have John.
So, essentially, the general, the organization of the district shall be known as a single executive type of school administration, with the board as a governing body, and with all activities under the direction of the superintendent of schools. Whereas, it says the same thing in a couple of other chapters. But, we'll go back, do a quick run-through, just to make sure there was any lost change.
That was good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that concludes our list of items for discussion. I need a motion, please, to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters relating personnel.
And also.
Austin, what's your first one?
Somebody is second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. There are no other items on the agenda after this. This should only take a minute.